So do you want this row?
Um, yeah, but I'd have to be probably.
Or is it east or the other?
I'd have to be at the very end of the scroll so I can see the people.
You're gonna see the back of their head.
Right, right. I need to kind of where those people are in the ground and the wood right there. Yeah, right at the end there.
All right, we go up one more row.
We can do that. Yeah. I just need to go so I can see it. Yep. Yep, as long as I can see.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Gilbert Town Council Meeting for May 24th, 2022. The first item on our agenda this evening. We will have our Pledge of Allegiance. I don't see any shouts in the room, so we'll be led by Vice Mayor Yentes.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance.
Next, we'll have our invocation offered by Pastor John Moten. Do I get that right, John? I'm sorry. Thank you. With Central Christian Church.
Good evening. Before I start in a word of prayer, I thought it'd be appropriate for us to take a moment of silence due to the recent events that have occurred in Ovaldi, Texas, to rob elementary. If you're not familiar with that, another mass shooting in which we have now received news of eighteen people dead. Three people, eighteen of those, eighteen children, three adults dead. Just thought it'd be appropriate for us to pause before we continue. Heavenly Father, we grieve with those who are grieving right now. For the community of Ovaldi, Texas, Lord, we ask for you to be present. Lord, for those families impacted by this horrible event, may they find comfort in friends, in family, and with each other. Lord, we grieve with those families and we pray for those officials and leaders in that community. We thank you for just you being our comfort and you being our hope. And Lord, as we gather here, although miles and miles away from Texas, Lord, we just extend hope to them. And as we meet here, Lord, be with us in our decisions, be with us in our processes, and be with us in how we communicate with one another. Lord, we thank you for our officials and leaders in the city of Gilbert. We thank you for our police officers and what they do and how they faithfully serve. Lord, continue to watch over us and protect us. Lord, help us to have wisdom, help us to have boldness, help us to have strength in everything that we do. So thank you, Lord, for this time together. Thank you most of all for you being over all and in all and through all. We praise in your holy, precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor John. We appreciate you coming and sharing that invocation and for that moment of silence. Next, we will have a roll call, and then we'll do our Student Citizen of the Month.
Mayor Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Amy Yentes.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks. Councilmember Jan Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
And Councilmember Kathy Tulkey.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Chevelli. Next, we'll have Student Citizen of the Month. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do believe this is our last Citizens of the, or excuse me, Student Citizen of the Month for, before we take the break for the summer as kids are out of school. It's my pleasure to announce the names of the Gilbert Student Citizens of the Month. Recipients were nominated by their teachers and principals for demonstrating good citizenship and character. We appreciate the opportunity to not only recognize these hardworking students, but also thank all the teachers and school administrators in the community. We appreciate all your efforts to educate and influence our young residents. Our schools are some of Gilbert's greatest assets. And we will begin with Group One, which is the elementary school students, beginning with Ashland Ranch Elementary, Alexander Zhang, from Bridges Elementary, Parker Olson, from Burke Elementary, Jace Pimentel, from Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Cindy Clark, from Chandler Traditional Academy, Grace Jennings, from Chaparral Elementary, Liam Stickel, from Christ Greenfield Lutheran School, Robert Seki, Highland Park Elementary, Paisley Covert, from Islands Elementary, Lucy Suffacool, from Mesquite Elementary, Lydia Alger, from Neely Traditional Academy, Catherine Robbins, from Oak Tree Elementary, Karina Elizalde Nunez, from Pioneer Elementary, Nova Abi Ate, from Rice Elementary, Sawyer Alvarado, from Santana Elementary, Samantha Cyril, from Settlers Point Elementary, Lyndon Basinger, from Spectrum Elementary, Audrey Joffe, from Town Meadows Elementary, Cecilia Johnson, from Val Vista Academy, Kennedy Knowles, and from Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Kayla Juarez Dominguez. Congratulations. From our middle school and high school, from Campo Verde High School, Brooklyn Leonard, from Canyon Valley High School, McKenna Frost, from Cooley Middle School, Nicolette Gachanja, from Edge Prize High School, Michael Alexander, from Gilbert Classical Academy, Marcus Steele, from Gilbert High School, Gabriel Neff, from Leading Edge Academy, Dorian Jones, from Mesquite High School, Erin Whitler, from Perry High School, Valerie Pizzano, and from South Valley Junior High, Jonathan Kenny. We could give them a round of applause. We look forward to having these in person soon, I hope. For those who did receive these, you'll receive a packet and it'll be sent to your school. And we are very, very, very proud of all the students in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We are and we have missed those students being here in person. Next, we have communications from citizens, and Vice Mayor, you will handle that, please.
Okay, for a little bit of housekeeping, we have all the cards here. If you did not fill one of these out but wanted to speak, these are in the hallway outside these doors. You do have to fill one of these out with your name when you come to the podium. We ask that you say what your name is and where you live. And you'll have three minutes to speak. As a matter of decorum, we do ask that people don't clap or cheer. Please maintain the professionalism for the meeting. And as I said, we will have three minutes. And I think only one person who filled it out tried to defer their time. We won't actually have people defer their time, but I think it's on the same issue. So I think there's good representation on this. So if you do change your mind and want to speak, please let us know. And then for our first speaker, we'll have Christina Curso. If you could come down to the podium, state your name and your place of residence.
Good evening. My name is Christina Curson. I've been a resident for now fifteen years here in Gilbert. And I am opposed to the Amtrak commuter rail transit centers, transit stations, coming to Gilbert. It's been stated here from this dais that there's been no opposition to this. Well, I'm your opposition. Many of us, on January 30th of 2018, were at the University Building down in downtown Gilbert when there was a large meeting put on by Kimbley Horn, the same group that presented to you at the study session today, earlier today, for the town. And it was revealed on a big map that there's a transit center. And that got a lot of people talking. And at that very meeting and subsequent meetings, we all stood up and opposed it. So to say there's not opposition surprises me. Who would use this regularly in 2022 in Gilbert, Arizona? I don't think anyone. You can do reports, you can do studies, but just look, here's a data point for you, at the buses that go down our arterials, the large streets. They're empty. Buses are empty. If you're genuinely interested in public transportation, get innovative, get creative. Don't bring an antiquated system to our town that will usher in problems and homeless and drugs. And where do I get that information? With my own eyes of what I see on the light rail. Gilbert has a lot of accolades of being the number one place for people to be able to work from home, the highest wages in our town, I mean, in our state. I don't understand why any of you think that a commuter rail is going to be something that people use to commute. Would you? I don't think so. I oppose this, and I look forward to answering any questions by email and response to any email that I send you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ellen West, and I think our clerk will be bringing you a microphone. Thanks, Ellen.
Hi, my name is Ellen West. About three weeks ago to a month ago, I emailed each and every one of the council members and did not receive one single reply back regarding this issue. I spoke with the mayor, who was very kind, and I invited her to come to my home and see what the problem was. But she did not avail herself of that opportunity. I live on Ocatillo Road. My house backs up to it. They placed stakes in my backyard, which will cut off virtually half of my backyard, having a wall about fifteen feet from my back door. This changes the nature of my property from acreage, and I am in an acreed, I am in a zoned one-acre-plus neighborhood. I will be less than an acre. This will change the value of my property significantly more than what you guys will be paying me for the feat that you will be taking out of my backyard. We will go from right now being worth somewhere between eight or nine hundred thousand dollars to a million two, down to about four hundred thousand dollars. You guys won't be giving me any money to make that difference up. My house will no longer be in the appropriate zoning codes for where I live. I will no longer be able to have the things in my backyard that we have been waiting to put in for funding, like the pool that we want to have in right out our back door, so that I can soak and take some of my pain away. I'm fighting three kinds of cancer. I've been fighting it since 2011. I don't have all that much time left, and I don't have time to move. I don't have the ability to move. I'm caring for my ninety-two-year-old mother, and we just don't have the ability to do that, to escape this problem. Excuse me. We would appreciate you all considering a three-laden road that doesn't affect any of our neighborhood. I don't speak often because I've had a stroke and I have a hard time getting things to work. The issue with turning it to a three-lane road instead of a five-lane road is somebody thought it'd be a great idea to have a horse trail and two sidewalks. Well, nobody's going to use those. Not a single person's going to use those sidewalks unless they're walking from a subdivision and they want to see how the country folk live. Well, we're not a zoo, so we're not interested in them walking by our properties. My husband is going to relinquish his time to me.
Could we have your husband fill out a card?
He did. Ray West, it's already there.
Okay. Okay. I think some of your neighbors have some additional thoughts on this issue, too.
Yes, but my property is different than some of theirs. I have a relinquishment from Roosevelt Water District for the easement that they have at the back of my property. My fence line is along the canal. That's an additional ten feet that you guys will be taking from me. So may I continue?
We don't typically defer time. You had your three minutes. If your husband would like to take three minutes to speak also?
He doesn't like speaking in public. I'll pass the thing to him.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Raymond West. I live at 21941 South 154th Street. We've lived in this property for over twenty years, and we moved out here to get away from the city. The city's moved into us. When we lived there, our original address was Chandler, and Gilbert took that over and made it Gilbert. We own an easement to the east of us. Gilbert took that away from us, too, with no compensation, which is approximately, what'd you say, about twenty-two-hundred square feet of property that you guys paved over and made a road so people can speed down to Weinberg Elementary and to Perry High School. We've had enough of Gilbert taking over property that doesn't belong to them. They've taken property from us, our neighbors across the street, and next to them. No compensation, they just took it because they felt that was the right thing to do. And now what I'm wanting to do is to build a five-lane road in our backyard. We have birds, chickens, and everything else you can think of, and yet this is going to disturb my peace of mind of being able to feed our birds that we have just fly in our backyard out of our trees that you're going to be taking away. They're mature trees. They're probably twenty to thirty feet high. And my last thing I have to say is that, why is it Gilbert feels that they can disrupt people that want to be left alone in the country? And yet you guys want to come through with bulldozers and disrupt our lives and make it look like crap for who knows how long till you get it finished? I don't appreciate this, and I'm sure my neighbors feel the same way. We moved out here, like I said, from the city, and they followed us. We understand the progression of city growth, but it's ridiculous when we want peace and quiet, that we don't get it. So we're holding you guys responsible on what happens in our future because I know elections will come up and all of you can be outvoted out of office. And just because we're a county island doesn't mean we don't get to vote. We do. And I'd like to just finish that with my comments.
Thank you. And I didn't mention at the beginning, but during communications for citizens, we don't have the ability to respond to comments. We're just here to listen because the issues haven't been agendized. So just so you know, that's the reason why the council isn't responding to individual comments. And you're Ray West. Yes, thank you, sir. Next, we have Rich Robertson. Thank you, sir.
Mayor Peterson, members of the council, thank you for listening to us this evening. My name is Rich Robertson. I'm at 15714 East Ocatillo. My wife, Stephanie, we have been residents for almost twenty years at that location. The fact of this road expansion is not new to us. I knew it when we bought our house nearly twenty years ago that this was planned as a minor arterial. I saw the Gilbert Transportation Plan at that time laid it out. The Ocatillo Bridge was part of that plan nearly twenty years ago. The easement on my property was platted for that highway in 1985. So it's not a surprise. But what was a surprise was the additional ten feet. In the intervening forty years, if you will, since my easement was granted, Maricopa County has issued building permits for pools and walls and outbuildings and houses. Gilbert and the county have platted subdivisions based on that fifty-five feet. And now it's changed. And I think that ten feet is where most of the damage is going to be. That's where the most of the expense for Gilbert taxpayers is going to come from in taking out those walls, those outbuildings, those swimming pools that were built with the expectation of fifty-five feet. The subdivisions that are on either side of Greenfield and Val Vista were planned for this widening, for these streets, and with landscaping. And so they look nice. The five lanes actually look nice on either side of that. But in between, you know, those subdivisions that popped up every time it rains, a new subdivision pops out of the ground, it seems like. And, but those things have been planned, and the landscaping is decent. So, but that's not what's going to happen on Ocatillo. In that stretch, you're going to wind up with eight-foot, ten-foot, well, not ten-foot, eight-foot block walls on either side. It's going to be a concrete tunnel going down Ocatillo Road. I noted in your bridge presentation during the study session the extensive community outreach, the design options that were presented. The involvement of the community was extensive in the surveys and getting people's opinions. You had a webpage that invites participation. That hasn't happened in Ocatillo. Because we are a county island, none of that has happened. Nobody's talked to us, not from the county, not from Gilbert. The webpage about this project is still under construction, just as construction is about to begin in our neighborhood. I'll make it quick. My request to the council is that you direct staff to make this widening conform with the fifty-five feet and to work with the residents there to see if we can mitigate the harm to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. We have Terry Natty next. And then we'll have Eric on deck, too.
Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Terry Natty. I live in a county island within the Gilbert Planning Area. I spoke here last week, and I've sent several emails, so I'm assuming you're probably familiar with my name by now. I wish to discuss the widening of Ocatillo Road and with and for my neighbors. Some of them have spoken or will speak. Others are here in silent support. Please know that there were eight households represented last week that were silent. Well, two were spoken, six were silent. I invite everyone, my community, my neighbors, to stand up, please, those that can. Not everyone here is going to speak. Ellen, you don't have to stand up. Not everyone here is going to speak, but everyone here is in support of those that do. Everyone here is asking the same questions that Rich did and that I am doing. I applied for a permit to build a new barn, and in the process of that, I learned that the county requires a fifty-five-foot easement and that my fence was at fifty-three feet. But I digress. My permit was approved on Wednesday, May 11th of this year. I repeat that, Wednesday, May 11th of this year. This is a recent example of the county's position on easement. So why, when a quick internet search reveals that most municipalities adhere to a fifty-to-fifty-five-foot easement, does Gilbert want sixty-five feet? In this case, that ten feet will be a gross and unnecessary expenditure, especially when the verbal breakdown we received of the space requires only eighty-nine feet. If you don't give anything and you get your five lanes and your bike lanes and your sidewalk and your horse trail, that's eighty-nine feet. You're asking for a hundred and thirty. What is the extra forty-one feet for? Gravel? Are you going to put in a twenty-four-inch or a forty-eight-inch box tree to replace my sixty-foot cottonwood? It doesn't make sense. So don't get me wrong, I still don't understand the need for five lanes, and I've explained to you why. And I believe that instead of having a separate bike path or pedestrian path or horse path, we can combine those three things into one multi-use path. But to take sixty-five feet is wasteful in this case. It's wasteful and it's disrespectful. It's a slap in the face to those who followed the rules for the fifty-five-foot county easement. So I respectfully request that you urge project planners to come up with an alternate iteration of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. We have Eric Neely. Oh, Natty, excuse me, Eric Natty. And then next, we'll have Jason Hallaby. And then finally, Anna Brenner, I think you deferred your time as well. If you'd like to speak, be after Jason.
I'm used to that. So my name's Eric Natty. I live with my wife at 21846 South 154th Street. My wife and her mother, who passed away two years ago, purchased that property in 1997. This plan was a surprise to all of us in that property. There are some that knew about it, we did not. So there's some irony here that, as my wife spoke of, there's going to be five lanes totaling fifty-five feet, given ten-to-ten-and-a-half-foot average, bike lanes, six foot each, horse trail of six foot, sidewalks, north side, six foot, south side, ten foot, eighty-nine feet. But you're asking for a hundred and thirty. So I reiterate my wife's point of why? Why do you need a hundred and thirty feet? Decoration, landscaping, we don't want it. The irony there is that you've got a horse trail on here, so you're actually including a horse trail and taking the property to make the horse trail from people who have horse property and are not going to use it. We're not going to be taking horses down a five-lane road. It's a bad idea. So my property totals about three hundred and seventy-three feet on that side. We're going to lose twelve feet in, so you're talking approximately four thousand-plus square feet we're going to lose. I'm going to lose a shed that my wife failed to mention that was permitted in 2014. Sits right on my property line. It was permitted for electrical. When my wife spoke with somebody at the county, they said, "I have no idea how that got permitted or why." That was our first clue something was going on. That was a while ago. So it doesn't make sense to me why we're just hearing about this, except for we're county island and we don't count. So we didn't get spoken to like the rest of Gilbert did. So in ending, I want to say, please, you know, let's be independent thinkers here and think about this logically. You need eighty-nine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason Hallaby.
I've lived at 21912 South 156th Street for about 18 years now. And I've always known that there was going to be widening of the road. My fence lines accommodated that from day one. What I didn't know was the extra 18 feet that were taken inside my fence line, which is about 3,500 square feet of my property, which will also reduce me to below an acre property. I won't get into the values and all that stuff, but what I do want to touch on is I've never seen the plan for the 55-foot widening of the road on each side. That was always what was promised to us, is that 55 feet will be taken away and widened, but never seen that plan. Never seen the 65-foot plan either, but it went through somehow. Never told about it, was never approached about it, and I don't think any of my neighbors have. And then the, I've got so much to say, and I'm not going to say in three minutes, but I wanted to touch on expenses as well. When you're putting a five-foot sidewalk and a five-foot horse trail on one side, and on the other side, you're putting a 10-foot sidewalk, you know? Talk about expenses. Vice Mayor, last week, I heard you talk about expenses. Half, a mile and a half of five-foot concrete is going to cost a lot of money that you guys can be saving. It's unneeded, and horse trail is unneeded. The aesthetics is unneeded. This goal here is to relieve traffic pressure, not have an aesthetic look to it. We want a functional look to it, and that's to relieve some traffic pressure. So a bunch of things going on here that just didn't seem right with us in our community. So just wanted to think about that. I may not be a Gilbert resident, but I am a Gilbert business owner for 15 years, and I do pay my Gilbert taxes, and I do want to see my taxes being spent in a, in a smart way. I appreciate that. Thanks.
And then Anna Brenner, I didn't know if you wanted, okay. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming and providing your comments and being so respectful. And I know there'll be follow-up on this. So that concludes our communications from citizens. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You on to the consent calendar? You're still up.
Indeed. I don't have any items that the members polled, so unless somebody says otherwise, we can move to approve items 1 through 8, as well as item 13 and 14.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Please vote. Thank you, Shafali.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. As we're ending that consent calendar, I just wanted to take a moment and ask our two newest judges to please stand. We have Judge Bruce Owens and Judge Casey Mundell. Congratulations on your appointment this evening and welcome to Team Gilbert. We look forward to working with you. Thank you for, to Judge Kutchin for the process to go through to bring us our new judges. And again, we look forward to working with you and congratulations.
Mayor, could I add just to thank the Judicial Advisory Board as well?
Please, thank you.
They worked hard. They worked a very condensed timeframe due to an upcoming retirement of Judge Dunham. And I think they had 75 applications that they started with and narrowed it down, and these were the two finalists that were confirmed tonight. But the Judicial Advisory Board worked hard to be able to get through and select some very sort of great candidates as finalists and obviously who we have now.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks for pointing that out. That is our newest process with that judicial board, and thank you for helping out with that Judge Kutchin. And I see our other judge here, too, this evening. Thanks for being here tonight, and again, congratulations. And I know that you'll have a formal investiture, I heard from Judge Kutchin, so congratulations on that, too. To our new, to our two newest judges. Next, we will move into our public hearing portion of our agenda. We have three items on our agenda this evening. I do have one, card to speak on one item, item number 11. So I will open the public hearing and I'll take a motion to approve 9 and 10 if somebody would like, close the public hearing and take a motion to approve 9 and 10 if someone liked to make that.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor, second by Councilmember Tilke. Motion passes 6-0. Now we'll move on to item number 11, which is General Plan GP 22-01 and zoning Z 22-01. And do we have anyone from staff prepared to make a short presentation on this item? I see Ava Cutro making her way across the North 40 to the speaker's podium. And then I just have one resident that has requested to speak on this item.
Mayor, council, sorry for wasting your time walking there. I just needed to tell you Josh Rogers is on the line to present if needed.
Okay, why don't I open the public hearing and have the member of the public come down and speak? And then if we have any questions, we can ask Josh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ava. Can I ask Carolyn DeGossi? Sorry, I can't read.
It's my motion, and I just put it there, I need to speak. I forgot.
Oh, okay, Carolyn. Thank you. I thought that we, thank you, Carolyn, and I apologize on butchering your last name. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the council comments or motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Tilke, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. Please vote. Motion passes 6-0. Moving on to our administrative items this evening, boards, commissions, and committees, any reports from council liaisons on any positions that you have, council members? Seeing none, I'll move to communications. Town manager, do you have any, anything on current events this evening?
Mayor, members of the council, nothing tonight.
That's because we just met last Tuesday night, so. Any reports from the council on current events?
No.
No? Okay. Report from the mayor on current events? You guys are so fast that I didn't even have a chance to open. I have two things to report, and one is this current, this coming Monday, May 30th, is Memorial Day. And we will be holding a Memorial Day event at Park University, which is located at 92 West Vaughan Ave. This event is held by HD South in conjunction with the town of Gilbert, and it is a morning of remembrance. The event will include a flag wreath ceremony, the battlefield cross, the POW MIA table, performance by the National Guard Band. The event is free and open to the public. Guests are encouraged to bring their own blanket or lawn chair for seating. The Gilbert Historical Museum will also be open for free following the event from 10 a.m. until 2 p.m., hoping to see many people out there to remember our veterans. And then on Saturday, Saturday, May 28th, we are also doing a veteran drive-by. We have a veteran who served with the U.S. Army Corps, Air Corps, 16th Bomber Wing in World War II, Sergeant Dale Glendenning, who's celebrating his 100th birthday this Saturday. And the community is asked to participate if they would like to, to wish him a very happy birthday. The staging will begin at 9 a.m. at the New Hope Church on Guadalupe between Val Vista and Lindsay. And his home is just around the corner from there, so we'll do the staging from there, and then we will go over and do a drive-by for this great member of our World War II veteran community. That's all I have this evening. Thank you for joining us. I'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting.